Call to order, Bedford Township Planning Commission Regular Meeting, May 22nd, 2019. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stephen, could you take the roll?
Mrs. Tinnevery.
Here.
Mr. Zibek.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Garver.
Here.
Stephen is present, Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Chairman Anger.
Here. Next, there's no additions to the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
There you go. Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Agenda is approved, next we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the April 24th meeting. I will entertain a motion for anybody that was here for that meeting.
Will the minutes of the April 24th meeting be approved as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next we'll move on to public comment, this is for anyone that would like to speak on anything, doesn't have to be anything that's on the agenda at all. If I don't see anybody that would like to, we will move on to new business. First we have a request for final site plan approval for Bridgepoint Church on parcel number 5802-010-05300, otherwise known as 9875 Lewis Avenue, Temperance, Michigan. Karen, can you give us some background?
The project name, Bridgepoint Church, applicant is the same, the architect and engineer, McKnight and Hosterman Architects and ESA Engineers Surveyors and Associates. Parcel number 5802-010-05300, it's for new construction and it is agriculturally zoned. The location is on the northwest corner of Lewis Avenue and Erie Road. The existing site characteristics, the subject agriculturally zoned parcel consists of 14.66 acres with approximately 1,005 feet of frontage on Lewis Avenue and 462.12 feet of frontage on Erie Road and is the site of the March 2017 fire destroyed in demoed Bridgepoint Church that was constructed in 1969. As well, there is an existing ball field that was installed around 1970, has continued to be utilized and has recently been renovated to increase fence height for safety purposes, including the addition of dugouts and the erection of a scoreboard. The project and site description, the applicant is proposing to rebuild the church in approximately the same location as the demoed structure, however, the main entrance, the front of the building, will be orientated on the parcel to face northwest interior toward the parking lot. The structure is designed in multiple phases with Phase 1 being considered at this time consisting of 27,014 square feet. Future phases include a drive under canopy addition consisting of 600 square feet and other possible additions consisting of a total of 40,920 square feet. The two detention basins located on the west and east side of the church ingress egress on Erie Road have been sized for current and future possible development identified on the site plan, that is Sheet 101. Zoning and land use patterns, the parcel and the properties to the west and north are agriculturally zoned, churches or places of worship are permitted uses within an agriculturally zoned district, therefore, the rebuild compiles with the zoning ordinance. The property to the east is R2B single-family residential zone, and the property to the south is C3 general business zone. As well, the Ann Arbor Railroad runs along the west property line. Review considerations, building setbacks and height requirements, the overall building is 35 feet in height where 35 feet is permitted by ordinance and the front yards, Lewis Avenue and Erie Road, side yard and rear yard setbacks comply with the requirements of Section 400 1800 Schedule of Regulations of the Bedford Township zoning ordinance. The parking lot design standards, there are no proposed dimensional changes to the existing parking lot, however, six parking spaces are being eliminated in front east of the existing structure to the north of the parking lot to avoid blocking access to the structure. The 248 existing parking spaces exceeds the required number of spaces for Phase 1, noting the required number of parking spaces will be recalculated with any future development to ensure compliance. As required, seven barrier-free parking spaces have been provided. Typically, parking lot landscaping is required when the number of spaces exceeds 150 as required by Section 41907, however, agricultural zoning districts are not included in the landscaping requirement. Fencing, screening, buffering and landscaping, the dumpster location has been identified on the northeast corner of the existing parking lot and is being screened by pine trees. At this time, no foundation screening or street landscaping is being proposed and is not required by ordinance as the subject site is agriculturally zoned. Landscaping is, however, proposed around the detention basins where visible from Erie Road and Lewis Avenue as required by ordinance. As permitted by Section 41907, cluster plantings as proposed are permitted rather than spacing around the entire bank. Site lighting, no additional parking lot or site lighting is proposed with the exception of three downlighted wall packs located above the three doors on the rear of the building facing Lewis Avenue. The proposed photometrics plan indicates each fixture provides an average of one foot candle at ground level up to six feet away from the base of the wall, which complies with Section 41908 exterior lighting standards of the zoning ordinance. Architectural requirements, the building elevations have been submitted with the building material on all elevations consisting of horizontal insulated corrugated metal wall panels, split-faced CMU veneer, vertical insulated corrugated metal wall panels and an architectural standing seam metal roof in a gray color scheme, and you can refer to that color cover page for the color scheme. While the cover depicts the color in building design from an earlier submittal, some of the elements are not being developed at this time and is scheduled for future development, such as the over-the-drive canopy and the recessed portion of the building to the south. Signage, there's no intent to change the existing signage on the site, which consists of Planning Commission-approved LED message board sign located near the southeast corner of the parcel, the original identification sign located at the north entrance off Lewis Avenue, and a preschool identification sign located off Erie Road. While no additional freestanding signage is proposed, an 80-square-foot bronze backlit logo across, cross, and you can find that on Sheet A201, is proposed for the bump-out portion of the east rear facing Lewis Avenue elevation. It should be noted, the zoning ordinance does not address wall signage or a logo for other than home occupations in an agricultural zoning district, and no additional wall signage is proposed for the site. If it is determined the logo is signage, Planning Commission may consider the signage during site plan approval and shall take into consideration the requirements of the ordinance to consider a larger-than-normal sign as follows, and I am going to read this portion of the ordinance. The Planning Commission may waive the requirements of Section 4192 but only where exceptional conditions or circumstances exist which were not contemplated at the time Section 41922 was enacted or which are so unusual that they are not adequately regulated by the section, but only if the waiver may be granted without impairing the intent and the purpose of the section and without substantial detriment to the public health, safety and welfare. The right to waive the requirements of Section 41922 shall include the right to allow larger wall signs or identification signs for units at multi-unit sites or buildings where the building or unit is of such a large size that the sign needs to be larger to fit the large scale of the building or unit. When allowing a larger sign, the Planning Commission shall first determine that the building or unit is uniquely large to warrant the waiver, then determine the minimum waiver required to make the sign size reasonable and proportionate to the building or unit size, and then determine that the intent and purpose of Section 41922 not be impaired. That section I read is right, the verbiage right from the ordinance. You can see Sheet A201 for the size and proportion of the proposed logo with respect to the structure. Regarding utilities, sanitary sewer is available to the site and will require uncapping as the line was capped when the structure was demoed. While the site was previously served by well, it has been indicated through call-outs on the plan and by those that have interest in this project, that municipal water is proposed and will be run to the site. At this time, the water main extension must be reviewed and approved. The plan does not identify a water line to the site nor is a timeframe on the water line completion available at this time. I did have a meeting with Monroe County Drain Commission, South County Water and the Manikin Smith Group on Friday, May 17th, 2019, and I can go over that in a little bit, and I hope to obtain additional information at that time. Any site plan approval shall be subject to the drawings being amended to identify the water source, whether it be municipal water lines and connections to the site or well information should be, should the water may not be extended to the site. All other utilities are available to the site. Reviewing agencies, letters of approval have been received from the Manikin Smith Group with conditions on January 2, 2019, the Bedford Township Fire Department with conditions on March 12, 2019, the Monroe County Road Commission with conditions on March 19, 2019, and the Monroe County Drain Commission with conditions, and we did receive an updated at your place this evening that there are approvals and that is dated May 15, 2019. In summary, the Planning Commission shall make a decision on the logo sign proposed for the east side of the structure, and any final site plan approval shall be conditioned upon, one, addressing all conditions contingencies of the MSG, BTFD, MCRC and MCDC review letters, amending the site plan to include all lines, connections and required information regarding the water source, whether it be municipal or well, that will serve the site, and three, submitting the amended site plan for review and approval by the reviewing agencies. We are going to schedule, we had that meeting on that Friday, and we discussed what the township is responsible for and whomever will be responsible for the running of the line. The township board has voted on an amount of money to run the connection under the track. There won't be any extension from that at the responsibility of the township. Any extension from that point will be at the expense and plans from someone else, whether it be the church or whether it be someone that would come in for a special assessment district. The township has no financial, not burden, but interest in any extension other than that, so that is the one thing. Now, what we want to do is, once we get through this process this evening, is set up a meeting with the church people, possibly their engineer, architect, whomever, and meet with, again, the Drain Commission, the Manikin Smith Group, the township, and make sure that we're all on the same page and there's an understanding with what we, what they may need to do and what's expected and from them if they decide to extend the line. So, that will happen after this evening. I have no problem setting up the time, but we wanted to make sure we got through this process first.
Thank you, Karen. Is there some, a representative for Bridgepoint Church that would like to come to the podium? If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Jeff Hutchison, I am with the McKnight Group at 3351 McDowell Road, Grove City, Ohio.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add or just answer to question?
With all due respect, to try and get everybody home on a decent time, I think I'll just answer questions if that's fine.
I think Karen had a very detailed thing for us.
I would like to say that Karen is to be commended for all the work that she has done, especially this last week to try and pull everything together to get here, so I would like to go on the record and say that.
Thank you. Nancy?
Since this is the final site plan approval, I have some questions about the parking.
Okay.
The 248 existing parking spaces, okay, wait a minute, let me go back, is, are there additional, it refers to several times in there, Phase 2 or additional construction on the site? Is that, you're enlarging the building at some future point?
That is the proposal that we've made with the church based upon their ideals, their dreams, their goals to do that, yes.
Okay, so, does that 248 space parking meet with whatever the population of the church on Sunday morning or Wednesday night or whenever they meet? Is that going to be sufficient even with the addition?
That depends about what's going to happen and when the addition, if the addition is put in, that your regulations may actually change, so I can't say if it's going to meet at that time. As far as I know, it does meet currently, and it meets the need of the church from the two years ago.
For this building, I'm talking about?
Yes. It's more than enough for this first phase, if that's what you're asking, and then the future addition, we will go through. One of the things with the McKnight Group, we, we look at churches and they are actually a different group than a lot of other commercial, you know, entities that are out there. We try and have a better standard of like one car for every 2.5 people, as opposed to a lot of jurisdictions might be four, you know, one car per four, so we try and make sure that we're going to meet their growth with that number.
Okay, and how does that compare to our ordinance, Karen?
They are above what's required for what they're proposing at this time. When they come back in for future phases, they will be required to go through site plan approval, and then we would recalculate the parking to ensure they have the proper amount of parking for the uses, because right now, you calculate pew space, chair space differently than you may a classroom, so if they're adding classroom, we can't at this time calculate because we're not certain what the use is going to be in the future.
I got the impression that as a final site plan, that there would not be future approvals, but they will be coming back for any additions?
It's not unusual that we have it being developed in phases, whether it be an industrial site or churches, that they move as they find the need to increase the size. So, they do come back, even though it's identified, I believe that when we met with them, we asked them to include that on there at this time, and even the Drain Commission wanted them to size the detention basin so they didn't have to come back with a full review and then tear up the yard and increase the size. So, they were sizing the detention basis for possible future development, but they will be required to come back because there will, we will require some additional calculations on parking, maybe even lighting if they're going to increase it and add additional lighting in parking lots, so it will come back for any, any future development.
Okay, that's what I was, okay, I'm glad you cleared that up. On your, can I go on?
Yes.
On your, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the technical words, but picture, I mean, the picture on SD102, excuse me, what is that called?
That is the landscape plan?
Okay.
That you're looking at?
Okay, well, then the next one, C301, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, I see how the, it's laid out on the lot, but this bump-out here that faces Lewis Avenue, I thought that was going to be in the rear. What is the bump-out? If that's not?
That bump-out is the youth worship space.
Okay.
As Karen mentioned, the building is kind of flipped, the main entrance is actually on the northeast or northwest side?
Right.
And that bump-out is the youth worship space.
Okay, so that's not the thing that you're driving on?
No.
That shows on the other, okay, then, and the rear there where it shows the other little proposed canopy, is that a sidewalk or is that a drive? That, I see the, the drive coming off the Lewis Avenue going back to the parking spaces, but I see like a arch, arced or semi-horseshoe there.
That is a drive.
That is a drive.
It is a drive, and in the future, the drive under canopy will be built over that.
Okay, is that going to be built now?
No.
Okay, so, that seems like a long way to walk for handicapped people.
It's the closest to the front of the building.
Where? Oh, I'm sorry, see, I don't know anything about the pictures, okay.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I see the handicap now, thanks. Okay, that's, I'll, I'll wait for someone else to discuss the Dennis.
The dashed lines that are there right at the main entrance, that is where the proposed future canopy is going to be.
Okay, the dashed, yes, 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 that, okay, I thought that, see, I'm not as bad as I thought, I thought that might be what that was.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for right now, thanks.
Tom?
Ms. Tinnevery, if I, Mr. Chair, if I may add?
Sure.
The canopy is 600, it's 600 square feet, but it's not an enclosure, so, just for clarification purposes, if they came in and stated that they would like to add only the canopy, more than likely would not come back to the Planning Commission because it is under the 1,000 square foot or 10%. But if, when they come back for the extra structure, it will come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, good, thank you.
It will have to go back before the building committee, you know, building department to get the permits and everything for that.
Yes.
Tom?
Two things.
Yes, sir.
Nice preparation.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
It seems like everything Karen read meets the ordinance. If everybody that came through here brought a proposal that way, we wouldn't need to be here. She could approve it in her office. My other comment was, is the cross with, with the slash, the swath on it, is that the logo of the church or the logo of the denomination?
The logo of the church.
Okay.
Supposed to be a bridge that goes up to the cross.
Oh, thus.
Bridgepoint.
I don't have a problem with that at all. I mean, I know that that's something that's, I don't call it signage, it belongs on a church, so you have my support on that one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, for me, going along the same lines, it seems very proportionate to the size of the building, where it definitely does not feel like it's large and out of place, which is what the ordinance says, the reason why you would not want to put it on there, so.
Right. Obviously, after the problem they had with the cathedral, you might want to stay away from tall spires.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I have.
Mr. Jenkins?
I think the plan is very well-prepared. My only issue is, since this is a site plan for a structure that's replacing one that is destroyed by fire, the water for both domestic use and sprinklers is kind of an unknown factor right now. How's that, how is that going to be resolved, you know?
The water line?
Yeah.
That's being proposed, as, at this point, is a 16-inch diameter water line that's going to be coming up through Lewis. The township, as was mentioned, is bringing it so far. Manic Smith has signed a contract and doing the design for the water line to extend up to the church. We have, that is part of the McKnight Group's scope of work, we have a contractor that we're proposing to use to bring the water line up, and then off of that, we're currently in design of the fire alarm system and, the fire alarm and the sprinkler system. I spoke with the gentleman from Excel Fire Protection, they're going to be bringing an eight-inch tap off of that 16-inch line, we're immediately putting in a fire hydrant and then coming in to the building with a six-inch, and then two-inch line's going to tap off of that.
Do you know what the timeframe is for all that?
Right now, we're waiting on the water line to get designed so that we can get the actual water pressures and everything so that the rest of the system can be designed, but it's all going to go in while the building's going in.
So you think six, six months?
Oh, the total building?
No, 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 just the water line to the building.
I do not know.
Yeah.
We have, we have a proposal of what we would like it to be, but we're kind of waiting for the design to get through the Drain Commission.
Yeah. Karen, site plan approvals are good for how long? Six months?
Six months, but we have to keep in mind too that approvals from all of the reviewing agencies vary as well. Drain Commission is only good for two years, however, the Drain Commission is working heavily in the water line extension as well, and the intent is to move along, is, just get through this portion of it, to ensure that they were going to get their site plan approval, and then work on getting the details on the water line worked out between the, Manikin Smith is actually designing it for the church, I believe, and then the Drain Commission. Again, David Thompson, the Drain Commissioner, recommended that once we get through this process this evening to ensure that they're going to receive their site plan approval, that we meet again and make sure everybody understands what's going to be required. The building official has to make the determination on what he would grant in the way of permits without having the information on what the water source is going to be and the fire department as well. Right now, I believe they are reviewing it for municipal water, only because that has always been what has been conveyed to us, that it's going to be municipal water and they're not going to be utilizing wells. If that changes, then it will again require additional information, so none of that has taken place as far as the construction drawing determination yet. I know it's been reviewed, I think Mike Hammond is reviewing the construction drawings and may have already approved portions of the construction drawings that he reviews, but the water source is going to be one of those items, it has to be determined, and I'm not going to speak for the building official on what, when and if he will issue a permit prior to that.
We have received a letter from Mike Hammond with a recommendation that he wrote to Dennis for, he's recommending permits be okay to be issued for the building and the plumbing, mechanical and electrical, but in regards to what you originally said, I don't know how long it's going to take to bring the water line up to underneath the railroad tracks and then we're going to take it from there, but it is going to be done with this construction.
So while, so while the church is under construction, there won't be any water source for the building, right?
While it's being constructed up to a certain point.
Okay.
We will be running the sprinkling lines and everything in there, and probably, that will probably be done before the water line actually gets up so they can actually charge the system and test it at that time.
And then the reason I bring that up is I'd hate to see another situation like we went through a couple of years ago.
Correct. And that is our hope, that we don't have that situation happen either. Part of that is why we selected the materials that we did for the building.
If, is the sport reaching out to any of the other neighboring properties in conjunction of running this water line at all and maybe offsetting costs or, or I know there's a larger residential area down the road there, down Pecker Street, I don't know if that's been explored in this quest for the municipal water source?
Initially, we had talked about trying to look at doing that, but then looking at the timeframe where we're trying to get the church up and running, that would have been, I'm trying to remember the number of months, they said it would have been at least another nine months or so to be able to get it to that point to even present it. So we're trying to help the church get back in to where they weren't, so the church has got money put in the budget to be able to bring the water line up to a certain point. There is discussion about the church having contracts, you know, with somebody to be able, that somebody wants to tie into it to work it out, but that hasn't been fully decided yet.
Thank you.
Nancy?
I heard you say from the railroad tracks up to the church?
Yes, to the very, the north edge of the property, so all the way across the entire front of the church on Lewis.
Okay, that's my understanding, that when you run a new water line, it has to run the total frontage of the property.
Yes, it's not going to just stop there and, you know.
Well, I thought you were saying- Well, I thought you were saying just run it under Erie Road, and then it would be, you would put the, so it's, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, too.
That's a good point.
Oh, I guess I had another question, sorry. The, the well, you don't have any intent of opening the well on the property at all?
No.
Once you have municipal.
Right, it's been abandoned, and it's going to be removed once everything gets started out there on the site.
Joe?
Question, Karen, is it, it sounds like if all the, Dave Thompson, everybody's coming together and wanna do this simultaneously, so when the church does open, and they're doing all their taps and everything ahead of time, so hopefully, the two can meet on, before opening, is what the?
We expect to get additional information once we have the church in the meeting, so everyone can understand whose responsibility it is for what portion of water extension, sizing the lines and things of that nature. And we, we hope to have that meeting relatively soon. I sent out a early notice to the Drain Commission and Manic and Smith to see if there were obvious weeks that wouldn't work because of vacation and that, but I haven't heard anything back, so we'll see, but we plan to do this soon, just to make sure that there is no delay.
And I think the parking lot's way too small. Did you ever hear this guy preach?
I have not been up here on that Sunday, no.
You gotta get up and hear him.
He's quite a dynamic individual, just in the meetings that we've had.
There's no more comment, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the final site plan approval for Bridge Point Church on parcel number 580201005300, otherwise known as 9875 Lewis Avenue in Temperance. That, to include the approval as proposed, the logo sign for the east side of the structure, and assuming the conditions are met, addressing all conditions, contingencies of the Manic and Smith Group, Bedford Township Fire Department, Monroe County Drain Commission, Monroe County Road Commission review letters, and then ensuring that I amend the site plan to include all lines, connections, and required information regarding the water source, municipal or well, that will serve the site, and that they submit an amended site plan for review and approval by the reviewing agencies.
Support.
Can you take the roll?
Yep. Stefan votes yes. Mr. Zibek?
Yes.
Ms. Tinneberry?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Garverick?
Yes.
Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Chairman Anger?
Yes. Motion approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on new business, we have a request for a sign waiver for Azogio Properties Cultivation Innovations on parcel number 580203505810, otherwise known as 6800 Lewis Avenue, Temperance, Michigan. Karen, can you give us some background on this one? When you're ready?
Just one second.
Yep.
Again, the applicant is Azogio Properties, 6800 Lewis Avenue. The sign company is Graphic Signs. The contact is Gary Harrell. The owner is David Azony. Location, I already said, parcel number 580203505810, C1 Zone. On June 17, 2008, the then property owner was issued a sign permit to replace a sign insert on a non-conforming multi-unit sign in that the sign did not meet the requirements of the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance, Section 400.1922, includes a provision that states, "At such time when any existing sign shall have its face or faces changed in any way, except for painting and maintenance as defined by the next sentence, or have any changes made in the name, words, or symbols used, or the message displayed on the sign. Unless the sign is designed for periodic changes of message, such as for a gasoline service station, real estate office, or the like, a seven-year grace period shall begin, which shall mean that within seven years, the sign shall be made to comply with the then-existing provisions of this Section 41922, or it shall immediately become non-conforming and illegal. This provision shall not apply to painting same color or different color, or maintenance of the sign, but the name, words, symbols, or display shall not be changed to a different name, words, symbols, or display, or this provision will apply. Any removal of a signed section or insert on a multiple-unit freestanding sign, or the replacement of a signed section or insert on a multiple-unit sign shall constitute a change which shall initiate the seven-year grace period. At the end of seven years, if non-compliance was complied with sooner, the owner of the lot or parcel which contains the sign shall have the duty to make the sign comply with the then-existing provisions of Section 41922. When the permit was issued on June 17, 2008, the property owner signed, and it was a notarized signature, the agreement to bring the non-conforming sign into compliance on or before June 17, 2015. Unfortunately, the sign was never brought into compliance, and the property is under new ownership. When the owner's sign company made contact with the township, he was informed the wall sign could be installed on the face of the building, however, the non-conforming pylon sign must be brought into compliance. The applicant is converting the multi-unit structure to a standalone structure and is seeking a sign waiver to allow the existing 15-foot, 5-inch-tall, 97.68 square-foot sign to remain, or 7-foot-tall, 50-square-foot sign is permitted. It should be noted that converting the multi-use to a single-use does not change the sign requirements as a 7-foot-tall, 50-square-foot sign is allowed for both structure uses. Following is the criteria for sign waiver consideration. The Planning Commission may waive the requirements of Section 41922, but only where exceptional conditions or circumstances exist, which were not contemplated at the time Section 41922 was enacted, or which are so unusual that they are not adequately regulated by the section, but only if the waiver may be granted without impairing the intent and purpose of Section 41922, and without substantial detriment to the public health, safety, and welfare. The right to waive the requirements of Section 41922 shall include the right to allow larger wall signs or identification signs for multi-unit sites or buildings where the building or unit is of such large size that the sign needs to be larger to fill the large scale of the building or unit. When allowing larger signs, the Planning Commission shall first determine that the building or unit is uniquely large to warrant the waiver, then determine the minimum waiver required to make the sign's size reasonable and proportionate for the building or unit size, and then determine that the intent and purpose of Section 41922 not be impaired. An aerial map has been provided to identify the signs located within the vicinity of subject site. Should the request be considered, the following waivers are required. To dismiss the June 17, 2008 owner's sign notarized seven-year grace period commitment that required the owner to bring the non-conforming sign into compliance with the now-existing sign ordinance requirements for the zoning district, to permit the non-conforming freestanding sign design to continue where a monument sign is required, to permit an 8-foot, 5-inch height variance, to permit a 47.68 square-foot area variance. The following shall be considered for inclusion in any motion to approve. All required permits shall be obtained from Bedford Township, and the applicant shall continue to maintain the entire perimeter landscape area of the base, no less than two feet wide, growing and in healthy condition.
Thank you, Karen. Is there a representative, or? If you could state your name and address for the records?
Gary Harrell. Address is 3443 Quail Hollow, Lamontville.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add to Karen's approval, or?
Uh, no, I think she covered it again very well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dan?
Is, is there a reason why requesting this larger exemption on this?
Well, it was my customers not realizing, when he purchased the property, that there was a, a condition that was not brought to his attention. So, so his, his intent wasn't, and maybe I can, he can speak for himself on this, but he was looking to extend the seven-year so that that gave him time to comply to a new, to the new sign, so, so that he could at least get, you know, maybe an additional seven years so that he can, you know, create the, the sign that he's looking for. You know, the condition of the sign is excellent. It, it's not a per se pole sign, you know, it, it's, it, a sign that, that fits the property. You know, that, that's kinda where we're at with it.
Well, and we've had several of these signs come up with the, the board here, and, you know, we're, we're looking at, generally, or I am anyway, some kind of hardship or justification behind it. And, you know, I understand extending the waiver gives a little more time for design purposes and maybe financial purposes, but it's, you know, there's, there's a single unit plan for this particular building, which the sign would reflect one unit essentially, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Tom?
Marty, if change of ownership takes place, does that have in any way have anything to do with the seven years ticking? And second of all, you might as well answer them both. I think when we instituted the seven-year deal was when we went towards monument signs, and once there was a point at which they made some changes, they had seven years in which they needed to comply with our current ordinance of height and square footage. Is that not correct?
That is correct. The seven-year obligation flows with the land regardless of who owns it, and the, the motive and purpose was to, I guess, eliminate through slow process in the township the taller signs and get them down to a monument-type sign for aesthetic and visibility, whatever planning reasons were driving that change at that time. Now, I would note that it's, it's, the standard is, is not a hardship, but exceptional circumstances as stated in the ordinance.
Is there a definition behind that, Marty? Legal definition?
No.
Thank you.
I have another quick comment, if I might. I was involved on this Planning Commission when we were instituting the monument idea and the seven-year elimination of large pole signs. But I don't think at any point in time did we ever think that we would run across a situation like this where we would allow an extension of the seven years on an existing sign. I don't think that was ever mentioned as, as a possible viable option. Is that not true, Karen, Marty?
I, I'm not aware that that was ever contemplated, waiving the seven-year requirement or extending it.
I think it's, when it's monument time, it's monument time. Thank you.
I guess if, you know, the sign issue is just, Gary, you've been here before, and everybody keeps talking about changing it, and it's never done. That's what I think, you know, we're supposed to do here, but, you know, if we're not gonna give this sign, it looks like, are we gonna do something about all these other signs that Gary posted in there?
That's my concern.
And let's go to all these businesses and say, your time's up, too, because it's not right to them if we can't do it for these guys.
If I may?
Yes, Karen.
The trigger mechanism is when someone comes in to make changes to their sign. If you take a look at the map I put on here, Chilinos, for instance, which is immediately south of the subject site. Chilinos has been there, they've had that sign. If they would come in and change the design of their sign, not just maintenance, painting it, and making sure that it's in good repair, if they would come in and change the design of their sign, they would also.
So there's not a seven-year limit, then?
There's not a seven-year limit until there is a change made to the sign. I added the signs that I had, I forgot to include the fire department, which also complies, but once there is a change that is made to the sign, whether it be an insert, or whether it be a whole design with a new ownership, the owners actually have the choice, but this has already entered into that seven-year grace period and has exhausted that seven-year grace period. We offer them the option to go ahead and sign the seven-year grace period, and then bring it into compliance at seven years, or they can do it at that time. If they want to forego the expense of what it's going to cost to bring that sign in with a new insert and want to go ahead and make the changes, then they make the change. If they determine that they are, they don't mind making the changes in the expense, but they're going to bring that sign down in seven years. Unfortunately for this property, that, that was already signed when they made the change, and I did include it in your packet, so this is a circumstance that we haven't come across, previously come across, so.
As a sign company, the frustrating part for me is, is there are signs out there. A prime example is the Secretary of State sign. It's clearly a sign that has had changes made that, as of recently, there's, there's new tenants in there, so I know that sign has been, has been altered. Whether they pulled a permit for it or not, I don't know, but I know that that sign is clearly out of, it's, it should have been taken down, is, is my point. And, and it's just frustrating for, for what one person can't get away with, several are getting away with. And, and, you know, I understand, as, again, as a sign company, getting rid of the pole signs. I, I agree with the lollipop idea, and, and this is not a, in my opinion, a eyesore of a sign. It's not on the road, it's, it's, you know, the building is a, is a quite large building. I, I just, I, I think we're, again, as a sign company, I hate coming in here, and I have to put boxes up. Everywhere I go, I put a box up in Bedford, because that's all, that's all you allow.
It's awful. We'll have to go there.
My hands, my hands are completely tied, and it's so frustrating because it does not allow me to have any creativity. And, and that's, that's the, the bad part about what this ordinance brings. And I understand what you were trying to accomplish, because it did, it did eliminate a lot of the bad, but it is, as an artist, it is completely taking away anything I can do. Because my customer wants as big a sign as they can get, so I make it 7-foot tall, and I make it 50 square foot, and it's, every one of them look the same, and anybody that has this ordinance, a customer looking for a business struggles because everything looks the same. Unless you're a major McDonald's, Wendy's, something that we get blasted every day seeing, you know, Joe Schmo's Nail Salon, you can't find that because everything looks the same. And that's, that's the frustrating part I have as a sign company, and that's, that's just where I'm at with it. And I don't mean to be emotional, I just take my job very seriously.
Yes, Tom?
You know, we recently, our last meeting, had the monument issue come up. After I left the meeting, I needed to make a stop at Taco Bell. Burger King, Taco Bell, this is at Seacor and Sterns. Walgreens, Huntington, take a ride to Ann Arbor, take a ride to Perrysburg, mall me. We're not trying to take your creativity away, Gary, you do an excellent job, but monument signs are the name of the game. McDonald's could take their signs down and put an M on their entrance and exit, and people would still know it's a McDonald's, you know, and we pick on them all the time because they have a tall sign. But the point is, monument's where it's at, and I'm convinced, and places I mentioned, Huntington, Walgreens, these are big corporations, and they all comply, so.
No, I, I, and I, I understand that, but you're also, you're also getting blasted with that logo on television. It, it's, it's in your paper, it's, it's in ads, it's in. in everywhere. They're spending millions of dollars in nationwide advertising. So we see that stuff. But there's a small company that, that only has a location in Bedford or in Perrysburg or, or wherever this ordinance is, that counts on their sign as their sole advertising. And it, it's, it's different. I'm sorry, but if we put Joe's Nails next to McDonald's and it's the exact same square footage, you're going to recognize McDonald's way before you're going to recognize the nail flicks. Because you're, you just have seen it, you recognize it. It's something that's, it, it's all in our heads. We know what the AT&amp;T logo looks like. We, we all know those major entities because we see them on a, on a regular basis. But we don't see Suzie's Hair Salon, only when we drive by it. That's my point. And that's what my point is in a small township like Bedford. This isn't Detroit, this isn't even Toledo for that matter. It's just a small community that, that's trying to bring business in and, and let people survive. And, and it's just, it's frustrating. And I, I do, I understand your point, but I want you to understand my point as, as a small business. I, I totally, frankly, McDonald's could eliminate their signs completely and everybody would still go there. It's, it is what it is.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a good point, Gary. And if you take, you take McDonald's, Jeep, Mickey Mouse, and Coca-Cola, in any language, it's branding and you know what it is. Lea Coca got on, come to Jeep when I was there and said, this is what it is. The small guy don't have a chance with a sign like that and what it costs to advertise. So I agree with you, but it needs to be changed in this township. And not just say the Walgreens, the McDonald's, and those are no brainers. Burger King, they don't need a sign.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins?
So Gary, what you're saying is if I'm driving down Lewis Avenue and I see Cultivation Innovations, I'm going to just pull in and buy it when I don't even know what they sell? I would say if you had the street address, people are going to know the location by advertising other than the street sign. They're going to know where to go. But Cultivation Innovations doesn't really tell me. You know, you see McDonald's, you know what they sell. But, yeah, I disagree.
I think the biggest part is that we are supposed to only approve variances based on exceptional conditions or circumstances. And that's what we have to determine, if this is an exceptional condition or if this is just a preference type thing. If there's no more comment, I will entertain a motion to go either way.
I'll make a motion. Let me, I have 20 seconds to review what I need to mention in it. All right. Let's go back to the beginning here. Zorg Gill Properties LLC, 6800 Lewis Avenue, parcel number 5802, 035, 058, 10, requesting to continue to keep the existing sign even though the extenuating circumstances such as we would have to dismiss the June 17th, 2008 owner's sign notarized seven year grace period, which I'm not prepared to support, to permit a nonconforming freestanding sign designed to continue where a monument sign is required. I'm trying to live by what our ordinance is, to permit an eight and a half, almost an eight foot, five inch height variance, which is nearly double what we're currently permitting, and to permit 47.68 square foot area variance, which 50 square feet is what is permissible. That's my motion.
Wait, you, you didn't say to confirm or deny. That what you just read was in approval.
Oh, all right. I want to deny the request.
The request, okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
No, I'm just, could I, I'll, I'll support that with a friendly amendment.
Sure.
To include there was no viable signs of exceptional conditions or circumstances existing to warrant it.
Right. I accept that amendment.
Okay.
I have a motion, I have support. Can you take role?
Mrs. Ima.
Now, I have to think about this. I'm approving or I'm requesting denial. I approve that.
Approve your motion. Ms. Tinvery?
Yes. I'm voting yes.
I'm voting yes too, I'm sorry.
Yes, to deny it. That's what the motion is denied, okay.
Mr. Garver?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Stefan votes yes. Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Chairman Anger?
Yes. Motion denied.
Thank you.
Next we'll move on to public comment. This is for anybody that would like to speak on anything.
He's not allowed.
Seeing that we have none, we can move on to new information. Karen?
Nothing at this.
I have nothing at this time.
Any commission or staff comment?
I.
Nancy?
I feel compelled to confess that I made a mistake at the last meeting. I went home thinking about my vote and I know it was approved and I'm not talking about anyone but myself. I, I agree, I believe that we must uphold our ordinances except for what this, it says in the ordinance, any exceptional circumstance or situation that would prevent us from upholding our ordinance. It's not just the sign ordinance, it's all of our ordinances. And I think that as a planning commission, we need to consider that always, the depth of amending the ordinance. I told Tom tonight, he was my hero because he voted no, but then he said Karen could make the decisions without us. And so now you're not my hero anymore, Tom, I'm sorry. But he just lost your pedestal.
Hey, easy come, easy go, I guess.
Because, because by law, state statute, we are required to make these decisions. Karen does an excellent, and Jody do an excellent job of preparing. But my concern, having only been here a few meetings now, is that we rely on them. They, they, they do an excellent job of, of educating us, advising us, giving us all the information. But then the decision has to be with the, this seven member board by statute. And so it, it requires us to do some deep thinking about these, the requests that come before us and whether or not we should violate the ordinance by, by allowing some of them. And sometimes we should and sometimes we shouldn't. But we can't just make it easy because they do an excellent job of preparing. We have to use our own minds and think. And I, I have made a request to Karen and Trudy, who is in charge, Trudy Hirschberger, the clerk who's in charge of the planning commission, that this board, in, in my previous years of having been involved in the township, the planning commission met once a month or periodically to go over ordinances so that you're well ver, or we were well versed in what the ordinance is. And I, I've requested that we do that again, maybe not monthly, but on a periodic basis. Right now, we've talked for a long time, the township board, as well as the planning commission, about amending this sign ordinance. Our, our ordinance enforcement department is very frustrated with it. Karen and Jody at times are frustrated with some of the, the stipulations in the ordinance. And so we do need to amend it. And, but you can't amend it by, by just, by not meeting and discussing it and talking about what's in there that you want to change and what we need to, to revise. And so, I mean, I think that we need to have one meeting that is, has not, no agenda other than workshop discussion on specific topics. So, I, I mean, I, I don't know how else you're going to do it because Jody and Karen and Marty cannot do it. That's just not the way it's set up. The planning commission is required to make those changes. Okay, I'll get off my.
That would have to be a meeting available to the public.
Yes. Oh, absolutely open to the public, but just no, no items on the agenda for discussion or approval. Karen wants to voice her opinion, but if it's not against mine, then she's not going to go on.
It's not an opinion. I just wanted to add on to that, that ordinance enforcement department and planning department have been reviewing the sign ordinance. We did have a meeting. We asked Nancy and Dennis to attend for the initial meeting to go over some of those areas where we have been challenged, having some difficulty enforcing, new, new technology that's out there that is not addressed in our ordinance. The sign ordinance is huge. It's, we try to address everything. We think we get it to a point where it's manageable and then we have new things. So we are looking at our sign ordinance. We've made the first steps with that. We've also talked to Leonard Graham and Goldsmith. And at, once we get an idea which direction we are looking to possibly move, we'll get some language. We present it to the planning commission for your input, also present it to the township board before we take, before we propose any action or public hearing for it, just to get the input. But we, as the staff, wanted to identify those areas that we feel are in dire need of review and changes at this time and then we'll get the input.
Karen, is there a reason, I can see why Nancy was there, but why was our chairman there and Dennis was invited?
They were just available. We just, I mean, there was no reason.
Did you call anybody else?
Anybody, anybody could have come. They, it was just to discuss.
Did you personally call them or somebody did?
We did. We asked them to.
Did you call our chairman?
Microphone.
Joe, Joe, use your mic.
Is there a reason you called Dennis, I'm asking?
Dennis expressed concern the next day after the meeting. Nancy expressed concern. So at that point, when they expressed some concern, we decided that maybe we should involve them in the initial discussion. No decisions were made, no input was put in from them. Basically, what we did from a staff is identify those areas that we're having some difficulty with. There was no reason that we didn't choose anyone else. It's just that because they stopped into the department the day after the meeting, we, we asked if they would be interested in taking an initial look at it. If anyone is interested, absolutely. We just have to be careful that we don't create a quorum and not have an open meeting. We can only have three in a meeting without holding an open meeting.
Joe, the reason, the reason I expressed an interest in the, in the meeting was because I've got many years of experience with that sign ordinance. I was through the first iteration of it and we've been going through several rewrites of it. So I have an interest in it. I have a history with it.
I, I do too, and I think it's awful bad. I seen you nod at, tonight at Tom to read this. This was all planned, but I get it.
Wasn't I saying planned?
Nancy?
Well, Joe's concern is exactly what my whole purpose of saying this tonight because I think the whole planning commission does need to be a part of the discussion. Personally, I received an email from the ordinance officer, from Damon Cecil, who had requested a meeting with the attorneys. And forgive me, Marty, it's no, nothing against the attorneys, but everyone knows my concern about not coming up with ideas before we include the attorneys. And so I think that this board is the board that is supposed to make these decisions and without discussion, I don't know how you can make, I would be very offended if Karen and Jody and Marty brought a ordinance to me as a, as a township board member and a planning commission member and said, this is what we want to approve. You know, I mean, no, I don't have any input in it. I'm a citizen in this township. I think that the planning commission needs to be, participate in this. We have people from all different walks of life and we all need to join together. But, but my, my interest in it was because I had gotten information from the ordinance department that you can't enforce the ordinance. And so it, it goes beyond just the planning department. And I think we all need to meet. I hope that you all have time to meet because I think your input, I see, I see good ideas from every single person on this, on this commission, as well as Karen and Jody. And so I, I just think we need to meet in order to go over the sign ordinance at least. That's just a start.
Different topic, but Matt, through you to, to Dan. Did that approval of the church, did that include us also approving the logo? Because I saw that set aside in the.
I included it in the motion.
Okay.
As proposed per the design.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I thought about that later. Wait a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other staff comment, I will entertain a motion to, oh, Tom?
Yeah, I didn't know if we were still coming around the bend. Obviously, there's discussion about looking at the sign ordinance again. But I think until, excuse me, until we have a new sign ordinance, our job here is not to hang our hat on changes, but to enforce what we have, good or bad.
You might as well not have a board then. You might as well walk into Karen.
That's our job here.
You might as well not have a board, Tom. That's what your job appears to do.
Yeah, to enforce the ordinances.
So you might as well not have a board. Karen says, here's the rule and that's what it is. You don't want to step up and, and when somebody has a certain thing, you might as well not have a board. If you're saying they're going to go by just this, right or wrong?
Well.
It's black and white right here, you might as well not have a board.
There is the part that says extenuating circumstances. And that's what we have to determine in those carriages.
I agree.
So there, that's the reason for the board.
But it shouldn't be that we read this and this is all it is.
And I, I think that parlay's what, what Nancy was talking about too. And, and I think we need to come up with a little more definitions on some of these, some of these words or phrases such as, you know, uniquely large and reasonable proportion sizes. And, you know, I, I do agree, Joe. I mean, that's ultimately what we're here for. We try to stay fixed as much as possible to that, that, that code. But there are circumstances that dictate, you know, sizes and that's ultimately what we have to decide. And I think we had a case here today that I don't think met that level. But there could be other circumstances we, we have in the past, last meeting, for example. And I, I think, you know, we discuss it out and we make those determinations and hopefully they're just and logical and, and, you know, we can go from there. But, you know, Nancy made a good point. I, I think there needs to be narrow, we need to narrow it down and give us maybe a bit more tools to make those decisions effectively.
Tom?
You know, I'm on the Board of Zoning Appeals and have been a couple of times. And the one primary thing that you must show is practical difficulty and it can't be financial. So if you don't have practical difficulty, you're probably not going to get your variance or what you're looking for. Here, it's all a case of interpretation and circumstances. There's not one straight, flat indicator that you must satisfy. You know, we got a lot more flexibility. Like I say, with BZA, if there's not a practical difficulty, there's no case. So maybe there's, I don't know if there's something that can help us on this board, like the BZ. I didn't realize how important that can be. And you're not hiding behind it. That's the rule of the law. If you end up in court, you need to be able to prove or disprove practical difficulty. With us, it's just a case of opinions and circumstances. With us, it's just a case of opinions and circumstances, which there's nothing wrong with. But it's kind of a wide-open deal on planning for interpretation. That's all I have.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Media adjourned.